Hello, everybody. Welcome to our budget meeting today in City Chambers, Third Floor, City Hall Annex, Monday, February 10th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. I would like to call this meeting to order again at 4:00 PM. All right.
Okay, so, welcome back for another school committee workshop. In prior workshops, the first workshop we had, we really focused on expenses in terms of what the budget was presenting. In our next budget workshop, we focused on revenue. So that was able to kind of give us an idea of where our expenses lined up, but also when you put in the revenues, what that would also look for taxation. This evening, we're going to continue our work on discussion on the articles. There is a piece there where there are some potential cuts for the school committee to consider, to get feedback on that this evening. But we also wanted to spend some time today looking at when our athletic director, Zach Lemlin, submitted his budget. One of the items that he submitted in his budget was an assistant athletic director position. This was also a position that was submitted in last year's budget. One of the things that we were looking at at that time was, there was a position that the city at one time was responsible for when it came to the upkeep and the grass mowing of our athletic fields at Sanford High School. That was a position that the city was trying to use in their budget, and they were trying to connect that position into a full-time position that would probably be seasonal. For example, the mowing would be in the fall, where I think this position would work in their, in their Parks and Recreation Department. But then, in the winter, it would be something where the position would fill, would go to Public Works. But they had a lot of difficulty in terms of finding anyone hiring for that position. So that was something that was shifted over to our budget on the, on the school department side. As we did that, one of the things that we were looking at was trying to also, how could we be able to fill that position? In a way, in a consistent manner, we were trying to be creative at a time when that was looking at, is there some things we can do in the athletic department to wrap that position in and include the mowing as part of that to kind of look towards a full-time position? We did consider that last year. I think when it came to presenting that, I think the school committee was a little bit more focused on the mowing aspect of that position, understandably so. So this year, it wasn't included in your budget right now as it stands, but I did want to have Zach come and join us so that we can at least present this position to you because there is going to be, when we get done, as it stands now, there is an add to our budget, but it's not an add in terms of a full position. There's a number of different things that would come into this position that would kind of fold into that. Nonetheless, it still is an add when we're looking at a budget right now that is probably a little higher than anybody would, would want it to be in that respect. So I thought we would come back to have that discussion for this part of this budget workshop. We're moving it up. Zach does have a commitment this evening as he's a liaison for one of the winter sports, and I think they've got their end-of-the-season coaches meeting type of thing that he has to be able to get to. So if it's okay, we'll have Zach join us to help go through this. We have a little presentation also that's in front of you. This is the proposal, full-time assistant athletic director position. And so if it's the will of the committee, we'll turn that over and kind of work our way through this proposal. Zach, are you okay walking us through it?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you guys for having me here today. I don't envy the situation you guys go through as it comes to budget time, so I certainly understand the difficulties working through that for the community, but I appreciate everything you guys do. With that being said, here to talk about the full-time assistant athletic director position, as Mr. Nelson had said earlier, I know this has been there previously, and I appreciate the opportunity to at least come here and share and kind of talk about the things that we can do. I think this is a terrific opportunity to enhance and expand our athletic department. We're fortunate that we aim to service about 1,000 students between 6th through 12th grade, between our middle school and high school sports. I think one of the major things that as we get started with this, and this number kind of struck me as we started, about 70% of kids quit sports by the age of 13. And so my goal with this and along with other things is to create an opportunity through the middle school and through the high school that helps to expand our athletic program to try to service as many kids as possible. So as we get into this, the very first thing that you'll see is having, you know, the middle school liaison. We are fortunate right now that we have a middle school liaison, which is a small stipend, which is a role that is filled by a teacher who's in the classroom full-time and then heads off to, you know, the gyms after school to help, share information, things that are needed from the high school. We had 433 kids participate in four seasons across 18 teams last year at the middle school. And by having a full-time assistant athletic director, we could dedicate someone to that to help continue to expand that. There's been questions that have been certainly asked to me as the athletic director, are we ever going to have indoor track? Are we ever going to have swimming? Are we going to have unified basketball? And, and the answer is, you know, I, I don't know. I think that there could be interest there, but it makes it really hard with, you know, the people that are there and myself only being one person. I would look for this person to attend the Southern Maine Middle School Athletic Conference League meetings to be a liaison because across the league, much like other schools, it's filled by, you know, a teacher who fills in part-time to be able to have that opportunity to then take on more of a leadership role, helps the league as a whole, but also provides better opportunities for our student athletes at Sanford Middle School. Provides the opportunity to continue to give the student athletes the best experiences in the middle school that we can offer through administration of what goes on down there. I unfortunately can't get down to the middle school as much as I would like to, and, you know, Josh has done a terrific job of just having inventory, upkeep, making sure they were ordering supplies and staying on top of the day-to-day necessary things down there. So that could be a huge role to only develop and continue to get better for what we could offer there. As we continue on getting into the mowing and facilities, I think that, as we discussed earlier, you know, that, that could be nearly a full-time job in itself for just to mow the high school fields, the varsity softball field, the JV baseball multipurpose field, and the soccer field, excuse me, and the JV softball field. Those fields alone are 20 hours a week, really ranging until November and then starting again in April and running back to that November. So it's a, it's a pretty big ask to do that, and, and I appreciate Jason Dudley and his crew for taking that on. But they're a crew of four people, and for him to stick one of his guys on a mower for, you know, the better part of four hours a day over the course of a week, you know, chews up other things that that staff could be doing. And I would love to be able to take that on, and we can have even more pride in the facilities that we have, and, and I think that's a major piece.
Just to jump in, Zach, we've been able to fill the 20-hour position, but we only can fill that seasonally. What I mean by that is, it's usually just in the summer because on the both ends of that, we don't have someone that's usually available for that. So when Zach says when our spring season starts in April and May, right up into the beginning of June, that usually falls in our facilities and maintenance department because of, we don't have someone yet for that job. They're usually available come maybe May, if we can get a college kid who's coming home to be able to do that position, May, June, July. But then they're heading back usually to school at the end of the summer, so when we get back into especially late August, September, and October, beginning in November, it falls once again back under our facilities and maintenance people.
Yeah. And then moving into facilities at rentals, you know, I can't tell you how many times people come into our building or I'll get emails or people will ask, you know, hey, could we rent this? Could we rent that? What's the availability? It's very minimal because we've, you know, got things going in there roughly six days a week, but there are those opportunities. I know a, a youth wrestling group had reached out about having us as a backup this past Sunday, and it was one of those where I said, no, like, you know, I've, we've been busy with, with stuff going on. I had regional wrestling. The last thing I wanted to do was end up on a Sunday, you know, on top of the snow and everything else to be there. I look at, at our rentals, that this could be an opportunity that's similar to the Performing Arts Center, to use our facilities to create revenue or offset the costs of this position. We currently have no one to cover the events, and I consider myself to probably work about six days a week, 60-plus hours to, to show up on a Sunday, whether that's for, for youth groups or whether that's for an outside group. I think could be an awesome opportunity to continue to showcase the facilities that we have at the state level, whether that is going back to groups like the Seacoast Warhawks who rented our stadium last year to play football, or any of the lacrosse groups that have reached out to me about using our times during the summertime, or soccer groups when our regular soccer season's over, or York County Community College who is continuing to express interest in using our facilities as they have none. I think that those opportunities are there. I don't think we're probably quite to the, you know, PAC level with that thing booking out every weekend, you know, years in advance, but I think that there are groups, if they knew that, that we had that opportunity and someone to be there, I think could, could generate additional revenue or offset this, the cost there. One of the things that, that I think that this could do, as I think all of you know as sports parents, the youth sports is, is huge, and having somebody that can, that can help with youth sports outreach to make those connections with our facilities. I, I love the, the facilities we have. I think it's so cool that our middle school basketball team's finished, you know, their season at Sanford High School, and the kids were all jacked up and so nervous to play on that big floor, and, and it would be a great opportunity to continue to offer that to other groups to either have youth nights or to have those things, and, and having someone who's in that role to be able to work with the community and the different groups, I think is a really great opportunity to have a unique experience that is not an additional task for myself or anyone else in the athletic department right now. It helps develop those coaches and the relationships that ultimately, I want those kids to be proud to, to come and play on any of our facilities, whether it's the turf stadium, whether it's the varsity softball field, if it's, if it's in the gym. We have incredible stuff, and I want to showcase that as, as much as we can. Some of the other things that we had, we had put on there, or one of my things that I had a talking, as a talking point, and this is probably on me as the athletic director, but one of the areas that I know I need to improve upon is communication. And I spoke on the phone with a woman today who shared exactly that. And I think that whether it's through social media, whether it's through our website, it's an area that we can improve. You know, we have 1,000 student athletes between sixth, you know, sixth and 12th grade. We have one athletic director, one admin assistant, and really one half, you know, part-time liaison for, for all of those kids. By having this full-time assistant, it allows us the opportunity to be more engaged in the community, to allow things and information to be shared out, to be a better resource for people other than getting in a logjam of emails or having someone say, hey, I don't know how to get ahold of anybody. I think communication would dramatically improve, and now we all of a sudden, instead of 1,000 kids, are reservicing 1,200 kids. And we're now looking at the opportunity because kids are aware of what's going on, because we've done a better job of, of sharing that out rather than myself and the admin assistant. There's other opportunities that I think that this position could fill, whether it's college recruiting. I'll be totally honest, I don't have a great background in that, and that's because I haven't had the opportunity to really, you know, delve into that, whether it is, you know, trying to recognize our student athletes at the high school who are graduating and going on to play at any level, to be able to put those informations together. We're, we're trying to do a college signing day this year, which I'm really proud of and super happy to, to put that together for the 14 to 17 kids that we anticipate going on. But when parents reach out to me, I don't have a lot of information about that college process, and being able to put someone in place only better serves our student athletes and our school in general, to be able to make those connections to, to anyone else. Certainly, there's fundraising, and I think that there's some people who have a knack for it, and there's others who don't, but whether that's fundraising by our teams, whether that's grants, whether those are different opportunities to either offset the costs or find ways for the athletic department to be sustainable, I think that that would be a terrific opportunity for someone who's well-organized in this role to do. I think that we have, and I know we had gone over it earlier, but our intermurals, one of the things the school committee has talked about is wanting to have opportunities for the kids who don't make the varsity basketball team or, or make another team that they could have, and, and that just goes to speaking to the climate and culture of our school that I think if I left a gym door unlocked with a basketball out and I walked away, I come back, I could easily find 30 kids in the gym playing. You know, can that become a structured thing where there's kids in our community who don't have the opportunity to go to Nassau or be in the SSYA leagues? Could we do that right there at Sanford High School and fit that in around the rest of our winter sports schedules, whether that's something that happens, you know, preseason, postseason, when those spaces become available? And then one of the last things that I think that's on there is transportation. Transportation has been a major, major thing here at Sanford High School. We've been very fortunate that Ledgemir has serviced 90% of the contract, but there's always that fear that they can't. I know that there were some times this past fall that I found myself in the minibus driving our middle school athletes to, you know, away games. If this assistant athletic director has their certification to drive a bus, we have a 28-passenger van right on campus, and, and we could satisfy some of those things, and does that help offset some of the costs that, you know, we're experiencing through Ledgemir? These are just some of the, the different opportunities that I think that this position could provide, more so than just mowing, more so than, you know, giving me a night off because it's certainly not about any of those pieces. It's, it's about allowing the opportunity to expand our athletic department and hopefully have 1,200 kids that we're, that we're offering these services to and, and really enjoy their time through a variety of different ways for the athletic department.
I know there is a situation this fall where I reached out and I was talking to Zach. I say, hey, Zach, how's it going? What's going on? And he's, he was in the middle of driving one of our teams to a game or, or with one of those. I was like, whoa, okay.
I was in the parking lot, just so everybody knows.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. Thank you for that. But I, I just think that also illustrated what sometimes we have to do to pull everything together in terms of the different challenges that we face that come up from time to time. For. Cheryl, anything? Oh, here's the, here's the breakdown in terms of what we're looking at financially. Cheryl, do you want to take this to kind of give an overview of how we were able to land at this?
So the biggest piece is, we estimated the salary and benefits for the position would be around $80,000, that's with health insurance and everything. We have two different stipends that get paid. One of them, we would cut in half and would still do a portion of it, but the, which is the AD stipend, and the middle school AD stipend would be the whole thing. That would get eliminated out of, with this position being added. We'd also take about $15,000 out of the facilities budget, which is Article 9, that was for the mowing. And so the net increase is $62,000. So that's the cost of the position.
And, and as Zach mentioned, there could be some other savings in there, some offsets, right, with some revenue that would be coming in. There could be some offsets in terms of the transportation savings with that. But there was where you're seeing the bulk of that situation coming in where it's just not a straight add-on to this position. It's coming in to be able to pull that together. Zach, anything else to add?
Uh, no, I'd like to answer any questions or feedback if you guys have something that I can, you know, try to do to go forward with it.
So you mentioned, like, obviously, we're utilizing our facilities minimally in the revenue spectrum, right? Do you have a set amount? Like you said, some people have rented in the past. Is there, is there kind of a number to that? Is that something you dig more into and actually create a structure or?
We do have a facilities use agreement now. I think that that is something that if this went forward, is something that would need to be revisited, because at this point, we've really been open to community groups, and we haven't charged community groups. The only things that most of them will pay for, if anything, is custodial services. So does that look to, to change, or if there are outside groups? I can think to when we charged York County Community College, when they wanted to use our JV baseball field this past fall, that was essentially somewhere along the lines of $60 a day. You know, at the end of it, there was about $3,200 that they paid to use the turf stadium for three soccer games and then some other facilities for their soccer practices. So there are groups around here that, that didn't balk at the price, that, that didn't kind of do one of those, hey, that's, that's too much. Even youth groups have offered and said, are you sure? You know, are there things that we can do? And obviously, I love having those groups there and, and whatever they could do to help. But we do have a facilities use agreement, and, and I would want to try to get that in line with what the PAC does. That way, we're consistent across the board for, for different groups.
The, a couple things. One, we, Zach does a really nice job because this is not the facility we're talking about, whether it's Partners Bank Gymnasium or Alumni Stadium. That is not Sanford High School's. It's the city of Sanford's when you look at it. All of our taxpayers would come back in to be able to look at that. So the hard part is, we reach out to our area youth groups, and we try to get to a point where we're not charging them. Okay? That's something to come back and say, everyone has a part. We all remember that. It's kind of a big deal when you get to play on that field. What happens is, it becomes a capacity issue in the sense of, how do we be able to come back and get coverage for that? Because it is an asset that we want to make sure that we come back and, and protect. Many of those other groups who are working at other locations throughout the city, they also have revenue streams coming from that where it might be something tied to concession stands or something else. So they're a little bit hesitant to be able to come down to the high school even though that it's coming back and not charging them. There is some opportunities there where they too are trying to keep costs down. So concession stands for an all-day football thing or an all-day soccer thing can be some significant pieces that people have kind of came back to say, they might rethink that in terms of whether or not they want to take our invitation to come and do that. That's usually not on us. That's going to be a decision that they have to make with their particular groups. I do want to point out, Zach does mention something about, he's talking about the Performing Arts Center, and I think there's a lot of alignment there that we can come up with. You have to understand, though, there's not going to be the availability that Brett has around that, okay? When we start looking at the pieces, the first priority for us is the Sanford High School Athletic Department, and that's a busy place in terms of that. So your, your, your window is a little bit smaller. The other thing that our Legacy Foundation did help us with is they were able to get a, a new updated score table with that. And there are some pieces on there where there are some slides or some things that we might be able to utilize, and we might be able to have some sponsorship to go back and be able to look at that. There's something else now that if we had this position, you'd be able to look at someone to be able to go out there. And so when we're using that for our volleyball games, for example, in the fall, or using it for our basketball games, or wrestling matches, or cheering competitions, for example, those are some things that you might then be able to see. Brett has done, Brett Williams has done a really nice job with that for the Performing Arts Center. I could see some alignment there, so there could also be some revenue coming in at that way as well from the position that we talked about. But I don't think it's going to be at the same scale as the Performing Arts Center. I, I think we all realize that.
Yeah, and, and that's one of those things that, that I would certainly like to streamline. There is the process right now. We use ML schedules, which lands in Becky Cleveland, and then from Becky, Becky then says okay, and then it goes to Matt Peterman, and then it goes to Brett, and it goes through a whole chain of command for there. I would like to, to be able to streamline that using this position to, to give more autonomy to this role to help across the district, if not just Sanford High School. We have groups that are, that are interested all the time during the wintertime in using Carl J. Lamb's gym, you know, for footsaw or using any other group. So it's not just Sanford High School, and, and that could be a major piece of it, which would allow, you know, some other people to, to be able to do some things that, that they can. You know, I, I appreciate Matt Peterman being on that, but I don't think Matt Peterman needs to approve, you know, footsaw practice, you know, going on at Carl J. Lamb on, on Wednesdays. I think that, that is a major opportunity to improve that system, because oftentimes, I think groups that'll come in or be interested in doing it, and they get kind of into that website, and they kind of do the, what on earth is going here? And whether that's just reserving space for a spaghetti dinner, or whether that's trying to reserve the turf field, I think a lot of people get turned away because that can be a challenging process, and, and being able to streamline that using this position, I think would be a, a unique experience.
Yeah. It's no one's intent to make it a challenging process. What the intent is, sometimes we have people using our facilities internally, and we don't do a great job of reserving them ahead of time. So what happens is, you could show up with footsaw and all of a sudden find out there's another group there. And that's the last thing that we want to be able to do as well. I think there's, Zach's right, there's some efficiencies and some things in this particular position, but I think giving someone to take the lead on that, I think could go a long ways to really being able to facilitate that process. So it's not someone who kind of says, I don't know what I'm doing, or where do I go to, you know, I'm just trying to reserve something, and it's turning into really difficulty.
Yeah, and she, I mean, she did a great job because that person has a trade. But I'm wondering, I guess, what I'm wondering really kind of getting at is that when you, when citizens that are, are not in recreation, are utilizing the resources that, is there an opportunity to share the cost? Is there an opportunity where it's, that gets pulled? Is there an opportunity to, to let this 62, take it out of that a little bit? I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Is there an opportunity to share the cost of, of that, of, of some of these pieces? And then along those lines, when, when there are events at the high school, when there's a cross-country meet, when there's a basketball game, when there's a wrestling tournament, and even some of the larger events, that's a, that's a real economic impact in this community. Those are folks that are coming. So if you have a wrestling tournament with 10 schools coming, there's all those families, all those wrestlers coming, they're spending money at our restaurants, they're buying gas, they're, they're spending money in our community, and I think we can't ignore that, that, that larger picture, that when you have a facility that's, that's doing all the great things that they are doing, there is a real economic impact, right? And then when we turn to our tax base, right, this is where if we, we might have to think a little bit ahead and spend a little bit of money in the, in the short term because it will benefit the community in the long term. And I'm wondering if we could share some of these costs with some of these other groups, and I don't know, you know, like, the city of Sanford, but also the Chamber of Commerce probably has dozens of businesses that would love to see more activity or, or the opportunity to have that wrestling tournament that, you know, you can't work seven days a week, 365 days a year, but with an assistant, you could do that, and those families going to those things. So I just don't know if there's an opportunity for us to share some of these costs so that, that it's not hitting our budget entirely.
Now, it's a great suggestion, John. I, I want to give Zach kudos because he knows, since he's taken the position, I've been a big advocate for us to be able to take on those big events to be able to bring people to our community. And Zach has done that. He's done a great job with that, whether it's soccer, regional soccer championships or regional field hockey championships, or a regional wrestling tournament. Just two, last week or two weeks ago, we hosted the dual state championships for wrestling with that. State track meets and lacrosse games. Zach has really stepped up to be able to do that because those aren't always situations that are involving Sanford teams directly sometimes. And to be able to do that, there is bringing people here. We do have a leadership team meeting this Thursday with the city that Melissa and Amy will be joining me with, and they've just asked for agenda items, and we've put that on the agenda item about this position to see if there's anything about a savings in terms of especially coming maybe from on their side about Parks and Recreation with that. I think the Chamber of Commerce is something else down the line that we can also look at in terms of that, but I think you're going to be able to see that we have a great asset there, and we want to protect that, but we also want to make sure that we're giving, you know, utilizing it in the best way possible.
And you're doing, I think you're doing a great job. You know, this.
It's noticed that these events are happening, and, and, and I think it's fantastic, and whatever we can do to help facilitate. we can do to help facilitate that, because that really benefits our community in a really positive way.
Thank you.
So, obviously, we discussed the revenue. FC, the Dome, they use Kenny Bunk's turf. So, having somebody looking for opportunities like that, you know, just to give that a, maybe that's a, where you can get a cost. But I agree with John on maybe there's a way to split up that revenue. But one thing that you really said that stuck out to me is that, that middle school liaison between the high school, I know, and you said, what, seventy percent of kids quit by the age of thirteen. And I think it's a little bit to do with maybe not wanting to try out in high school, what if I don't make the team? Or, and to have somebody that's kind of engaged with the students at the middle school level, but also interactive into the high school level, I think that's huge. Also, a liaison between, like, the Nassau Center program, right? Those, some of those kids don't try out in the middle school. They're having fun with rec. But there's nobody, there's not enough time in the day, you know, to make those connections. So, just wanted to point those few things. Like, a big benefit to this position would be bringing those middle school kids in and keeping them growing.
Yeah, no, because I certainly agree. As I look, I want to obviously have as many kids involved as possible. As, you know, the term gets used all the time about the funnel. I want that funnel to be open, especially at the middle school. You know, where we've unfortunately hovered, you know, in and around, anywhere is between thirty-nine to like forty-two percent participation rate. I would certainly like to see that get higher. It's, I don't want to say disappointing, but it's disappointing at the high school level where we'll have forty-two percent participation rate with almost twelve-hundred kids in the building. Oftentimes, it's a lot of the same faces playing on one team to the next. And I think that this position can also help facilitate that by starting younger, by starting at the youth level, whether it is getting those games to be at the Sanford High School, whether it's creating more opportunities at the middle school to give those kids involvement, or whether it's something as simple as, hey, the information needs to be shared earlier. And, you know, poor Mr. Allen is, you know, teaching five blocks a day of eighth grade math that he might not have thought about making sure the, you know, the flyer got sent out to the announcements on time. You know, and poor Mr. Allen will get beat up in his emails because he'll have whatever's going on. And he didn't see the email from, you know, a parent asking about when volleyball tryouts were. And those parents don't know to reach out to me until it's too late. And I think just continuing to help improve that. And does that get that, you know, that participation number up from forty-two to forty-five to forty-eight? And, you know, those six, eight, ten, twelve kids, whatever, are still participating at their junior year before they decide, hey, I'm going to go do something else. And I think that's huge. And I think it provides lifelong opportunities for them to be in part of it. And it's super cool to hear kids talk about their experiences. You know, when I have my leadership council that talk about, you know, I asked them last week, what's been your favorite sports memory? Whether it was beating TA in the playoffs last year, whether it's trying to get to the Civic Center and all these different things. And I'm like, man, could more kids have that opportunity, you know, by getting involved either at the youth level and helping to promote that at the middle school, and helping us certainly out at the high school, along with a lot of other pieces. So, I think that it's a cool opportunity.
I think going along with what you just said, and Melissa just said, you know, the intermurals when we had had, you know, the stipend committee back in, you know, last year, that definitely got brought up. Because I do think, you know, you lose the kids from the middle school to the high school. They're like, oh, I'm not going to make varsity, you know, as a freshman. You're not supposed to make freshman varsity. You know what I mean? Or, you're not going to make a team. And so, they just don't even try to put their self out there. And I think having intermural weather, you know, is definitely going to be how we get the participation up. And, you know, I would, you know, that, I think would just be huge for a lot of students.
Okay. Any other questions for Zach with this? Zach, thank you. Appreciate you taking the time to come in. A lot of thoughts gone into this with that. Appreciate. I know you've got to head to one of your meetings for winter sports, for being the athletic liaison for the Southern Maine Activities Association. So, really appreciate you taking some time to come in. We don't want to hold you up from getting to that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. I think what I'd like to do is, we'll put pause on that for now. As we sit back, I'd like to shift gears and go into what we've got for some possible considerations to make some adjustments to the budget in terms of some reduction. So, if we could bring that one up with that. Obviously, when we saw the budget, can you go one more screen ahead? Okay. So, where we sit today, as of last Monday, was we have a seven-point-eight percent increase on the expense side. And that equals out for the taxation side, after you factored in our revenue, to a fourteen-point-one percent. So, that's where we are right now. If you want to go back to that first screen, so knowing that those are high, the seven-point-eight on the expense side and the fourteen-point-one, we've gone back to kind of look at our budget, to look at some things that right now, as we look at it, all of these are things that are probably needed and things that we definitely would like to have. But when you start looking at those numbers, it does put some other things to be able to consider that for it. So, these are, as we've gone back as a team and worked at that, these are what we're coming up with in terms of some possible recommendations. There is some professional development opportunities that are probably more around our administrators and at the national level with some pieces that I think would be great opportunities. But I think that's something that we could be able to make an adjustment there by a reduction of five thousand. If you remember, in this budget, we did, just like we did last year, there was a request to increase the hours of our athletic trainer. That would be an additional ten hours have been requested. A lot of that would be able to also support more fully at the high school, but also extend into the middle school. That's something that I think could be very helpful. I think it's short dollars. But when you also look at it in terms of the situation we're in, that's something that also would be recommended for consideration for that. There's a couple other sports on there. You see co-op opportunities for ice hockey and for swim. Ice hockey would be four thousand, swim would be six thousand. We currently do not offer a ice hockey team that's sponsored by the Sanford School Department, and we don't offer a swim team. What we do have are, for both of those sports, are opportunities where interested people can co-op with other area schools to be part of that. For hockey, this year and the last couple of years, we have been co-opping with Marshwood. They are the lead. It's also, I think, Kittery, Noble, us are also co-opping with Marshwood. What happens there is, there is an expense that any of our people who are interested, that would be an expense that's passed on to the family. And so, when you come to ice hockey, ice time is expensive. And so, that's something that would be a charge to families. Usually, it's right sometimes in the thousand-dollar range, nine hundred dollars, to be able to do that if you're interested. And that's why you're seeing a four thousand dollars. That, in essence, would cover that for people who would be interested in playing ice hockey to go towards that for it. For swim, we, a couple of years ago, we did make the tough decision to cut our swim program at Sanford High School. That wasn't something that was done easily. It was done when you were looking at actually our participation numbers. And you had seen that those petition, our participation numbers had been down. So, what we do right now is we co-op with Massabesic. Massabesic is the lead. They provide the coach. They provide all the official fees and whatnot that is part of that. And then, they also would charge anybody from Sanford who's interested in doing that. And so, I know this year, we had interested students. Initially, what we were told as a number was somewhere in just over the two-hundred-dollar range would be what the charge was. We had interested families. Massabesic later came back to us after looking at, and a deeper dive into their numbers, and that number went up over five hundred dollars. And that was where some of our people had come back, had dropped out with that. So, that was something. As Zach looked at that in his budget, he had submitted ten thousand dollars in there to do that. I think it's understandable. I also think when we're looking at a budget of seven-point-eight percent increase in, on expense side and the taxation, that would be something for us to be able to at least consider, is that something we'd want to continue in? Or is it something that can come out of the budget? We also had a small stipend that through the SRTC budget for career and technical education, you know that that program's expanding. We're adding programs to that. So, that was something that we were looking at. Instead of having a full-time position, adding a position for that, we would be able to add on to a stipend. So, you're looking at a recommendation there. Steve, at the school committee meeting last Monday, did talk about pre-K. He talked about our partnership with the YMCA that's working really well. As they've come back to dig into that budget a little deeper, we feel like there's a savings in there of twenty-four hundred dollars that we could be able to reduce that budget. We also, as you know, did get the TJ Gorman grant for us to be able to come back and help with our outreach efforts in doing that. As part of that, we did put in overhead support coming from the local budget of ten thousand, that we can be able to, also be able to eliminate that. We've also got one of our administrative assistant positions at Carl J. Lamb. That has been a year-round position there. There's been two year-round positions. So, we'll be adjusting that one. If one of those positions will be going from year-round to just school year only, extra days, that will give us a savings of eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. We also, in this budget, on the technology side, we had some iPads that were in there for forty-two thousand, five hundred. We've worked hard to be able to find another source, funding source for those. So, that's going to put us another savings of forty-two thousand and five hundred. We also had the middle school basketball hoops key system, something to allow those, put that in to allow the baskets there to go up easier and quicker for that. Obviously, a nice thing to have. That's something that in this budget with where we are of a seven-point-eight percent expense increase and fourteen-point-one percent in taxation, something to look at a little bit differently. So, you can see where the expense reduction is in there. And that would, Cheryl, you're talking about the use of capital reserves. Do you want to kind of explain how that would work?
Yes, because we had in our original budget, using twenty-five thousand from the capital reserves to pay for that middle school basketball hoop key system, that if we do cut that, we have to not use the reserves because the reserves of capital have to be used for capital items. And so, you have to have something attached to it. So, we would take that out. And so, your net total taxation reduction reduces from a hundred and nineteen thousand down to ninety-four thousand. So, if you go to the next page, it might make a little more sense. So...
So, our veterans will see, this is usually what we work, to kind of track our work. So, that back as of last Monday, after our revenue came in, you saw that we had a seven-point-eight percent increase on the expense side. That resulted in taxation just under two-point-five million, a fourteen-point-one percent. If you're coming in to put those changes in on the expense side that we talked about, the hundred and nineteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven, on the revenues, on the taxation side, it would only be ninety-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven. That would bring those numbers down to under five million dollars on the expense side of seven-point-one percent, and to just under two-point-four million on the taxation, to bring that down to eleven-point-four. That would be if you took all of those changes that are on that sheet. If you want to go back to that other screen, that's what we've got. I'll be opening up if anybody has any questions or thoughts or feedback around at least some of those considerations for the budget.
So, the overhead grant support, I wasn't really clear on that.
So, with the grant, is it an allowable expense up to a certain amount that pays for overhead? So, in terms of that, it could pay for whoever's leading that grant, pay for part of their salary? That's the type of stuff that heats, heat, electricity, that type of stuff also is an allowable expense under some grants in a certain amount. And so, there's a small percentage of that grant that's allowable for that expense.
So, we didn't know exactly where yet. So, we're putting a placeholder of ten thousand.
Okay. And I guess also, when I look at the stipend for the office manager for the CTE, knowing that we're adding, you know, the two new programs, in that obviously there's more work when you add more programs, is that something that we have had? Or is this something that they were hoping to have?
It was something they were hoping to have. Yep.
And then, for the CJL admin, administrative assistant, so Carl J., if I'm not mistaken, runs summer programs. And so, what, like, what would happen? Someone came to the school during the summer, they would, what would be the, what would happen, I guess?
Yep. Good question. That is the place where we do have, the majority of our summer programming has been at Carl J. Lamb. I would say that the people who are in those positions, the administrative assistants, they are not dedicated to that to be able to be part of their responsibilities. That being said, you know if they're there and people are coming, you're going to be able to be able to be brought into that on some respects. We do have people that are part of the summer programming that are onsite, that are part of their responsibilities. So, would I see that people would still be able to have access to those programs and be able to come back and do those pieces? Yes. Do I see that it would probably be as, maybe, quick and as efficient? I don't want to, I don't think that would be fair to the people involved. But it's not something like those programs would have to cease to exist, or we wouldn't be able to provide the resources, the services.
On the co-op...
And there is still one who's full-time over there with it. What you run into in the summer anyways, is there's a lot of vacation time that's taken as well. So, that vacation time isn't always taken to say, I'm going to work around the summer programming. They take the vacation in terms of the whole view of what the year is for them anyways.
Lisa?
On the two co-op programs, the ice hockey and the swim, that is not the full amount of the budget. There are still some funds in there in case, or that is the full budget.
That's what we had put in there right now, was, we kind of looked at it like the quick...
I thought you said ten.
The quick, total together.
Okay.
Yeah. I think as you look at it, we've estimated that there's a chance of four hockey players playing. And that would be a thousand dollars each to go towards that ice time that they've had. Swim has been more of looking at the idea of, if it's five hundred dollars and it stays at that number, looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve kids being able to do that. Now, the idea would be, if there was, if that money stayed in the budget, and let's say we had fifteen people looking to be part of swim, we'd have to adjust that money to go towards the fifteen. So, I think what you would have is, there may be some costs that would still be passed on to families, but it'd be much less than what there currently is in terms of what they're paying.
So, with zero in the budget, if a student wanted to participate, it would be all the burden of the family?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep.
That one's kind of hitting me too a little bit. Is there any way we can have an agreement to pay half? Or, you know what I mean? I don't know. Just to, you know, a thousand dollars apiece in hockey is kind of, I mean...
Prohibitive.
Prohibitive. How many kids are really not, are they dropping off from that sport altogether simply because of, you know, that expense? So, for me, I don't like just taking this out and leaving, you know, these sports teams without any funding at all.
Yeah.
Or help with fundraising or something for them.
Yeah. I wonder if the boosters would be helpful. I don't know. I don't want to speak for them. I just, it's a question mark. But also, just, you know, I, my heart breaks for these kids. Because, you know, especially with ice hockey and... with ice hockey and swim, to be honest with you, these kids have been doing this usually through their youth. So, and they've been looking forward to representing in high school level. So for it to not be there is, is hard to swallow.
And what you, the other challenging part too is a couple of things. One, we don't offer any middle school hockey or middle school swim, so we don't really have an idea because there are swim programs, but a lot of those in some ways are youth things privatized in ways that people are already paying. So I agree that if we're able to come out and do that, we may have more kids come out, right, than what we were, than what was, which, you know, I only point that out that I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing, but you also are kind of working with the idea of the unknown of what you have. The other piece is, I do think, I think on the hockey side, I'm not sure about swim, but there might be some fundraising opportunities that families may be able to participate in to help bring down that cost somewhat. But those would probably be some fundraisers, for example, that might be organized by the Marshwood Hockey Boosters, or it might be something that they're offered by the Massapek Swim or Athletic Department as more of just Sanford-specific in terms of doing those pieces for. But I, you know, I think we all feel terrible that we're not able to offer those opportunities that you came back and talked to. The idea here is, I think as you saw initially, the plan was yes, let's include those. And then when we did, I think it's just now looking at, boy, this budget's higher than anyone wanted. Are there ways, is these some things to be able to come back? But we're open for any suggestions that people have in terms of taking action, at least on those particular ones or any items on the list. Now, we also have, you have the list of the, yep. So Melissa did have us ask, a request to be able to see if we could have a list of the, of the position, the ESR positions that were included in last year's budget. So we do have that coming in. And then there, right along with that, if you remember, there was a lot of dialogue last year that there were ESR positions that did get rolled into the local budget, but there were a number of positions that were also reduced with that. So here is that list also coming back to be able to also come back to also be looking at consideration. So as you look at that, I think one of the things that, just looking at timing here, we have a budget workshop right now. We also have a budget workshop scheduled for this Wednesday at 4 o'clock. The chambers aren't available on Wednesday, so that meeting will be at the central office. We also have a budget workshop scheduled for two weeks from tonight on the 24th. That would be right here in the chambers. And we also have a school committee meeting, regular business meeting scheduled for the 24th, and that would be something for us to, if ready, we would take action on the 2025, 2026 school budget, that we would come back to have that be an agenda item for the approval, so that that would then be ready for us to go to the city council to present to them. The first meeting, joint meeting of the city and the school department for the city council would be on Tuesday, March 4th, in terms of that. So these are all things that are trying to just present information to you in terms of that and what that timeline is in order for us to be able to continue to work on this budget.
Can I just have a clarification on one abbreviation here? IDEA?
That is a federal grant that is used for our special education department to help supplement that budget. Yep.
And I will just point out that the one that says former ESR positions, that's actually got the current budget we're working on's numbers are included there. It's not last year's budget number.
Because those are not in our budget, right? They were removed last year and they have not come back to be put into this budget either.
No. For the ones that were former ESR positions that are currently in our budget, which is the orange type, that one has the 2026 budget number that's in our budget that we are presenting. The blue one is last year's number that we had cut because we don't have them in our budget anymore, so the reductions.
And I just want to, for clarification and correct me if I'm wrong, there was a lot of, just, there was a lot of discussion last year about ESR positions. We were questioned on that a lot. And, you know, when we got the ESR money, that was in 2021, was it? And so needs, what we needed then and then what we needed last year were drastically different. Students were different. And so there was a lot of conversation and emails from community members, kind of saying, you promised to get rid of all the ESR positions that you accepted back in 2021. And what the school committee said last year, the majority was that, yes, but these needs, you know, what you, what you needed in your own family three or four years ago are different what you need now. And that was sort of a lot of the conversation. I mean, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but just for clarification, because we have two new members here and-
Yeah. I think what would happen was that what was looked at was trying to look at what our needs were and trying to prioritize what we were looking at for those needs. So it wasn't, yeah, when you look at it, that there were ESR positions that were included in last year's budget as part of the local when the ESR funds had gone away, there were corresponding actions also taken to be able to come back to show about the priorities that we had. And so I think that's why when we're passing out that sheet, you're seeing the ESR positions last year that were included in this budget. I do think it's also important to tell the other side of that, that was also done in a way that it wasn't just add in and come back to look at it, it was more about shifting around and doing some of the priorities because those positions that were eliminated, right, they're not-
Non-ESR positions were eliminated-
Correct.
-in order to keep ESR positions.
In essence, yes. And restructuring of things to come back to really make sure that that wasn't being put on to the local taxpayer. Is it the will of the group tonight to look at the, if we go back to those recommended considerations this evening, are there some that people are willing to give at least general approval for us to continue with those? I did hear something where it feels like the co-op stipends are something that people right now, I think, would like to at this time at least keep those in? Yeah, and discuss further? I'm not sure what other people's thoughts are on the rest of that list, if that's something we can be able to look at, taking action on as we start to continue to work towards a final budget approval.
You know, the other thing for me is, you know, the athletic trainer, the additional hours, they asked for it last year, they're asking for it again. Zach said that we've got, what was it, 1,000, over 1,000 students that are participating in all hours of the night, six days a week. So, you know, it's, it's hard to say, for me, the additional 10 hours, no again, that is impacting all those students, right? The large amount of students that are needing that. If we're, like, I feel like if we're considering the ice hockey and the swim co-op, which, you know, is important, I think the athletic trainer, I think we need to talk about a little bit more as well.
Yep. So a couple of things. One, I apologize, we're all over the place here. I'm throwing things at you. We just had an athletic presentation, so that's kind of hanging out there to see what are the next steps for that. We do have a meeting this Thursday with city leadership where we can, I think, explore some partnerships on that. So that may have to be something that's put to the side for now. When we start talking about the athletic trainer piece, once again, that was something that, it was kept in this budget. It wasn't something, even though it was cut last year, it was back in this budget. I'm only recommending it now because of where we're looking at with the high expense in trying to reduce the expense and taxation. I will say this, the, the group that we contract with, because this athletic training, it's not an employee that we come back and pay salary and benefits to. This is a contracted service. And the group that we use, that relationship, we have been very pleased with. They've done a really nice job. And I will say that they have really kept their costs also down as well. And that was something that I want to put out there, when you're looking at what's coming into that expense, it's probably one of those that might be, yes, is an expense, but the trade-off may be one of those things that we want to be able to consider because of the impact that it's going to be able to come back and have in doing that. Because I do think that, Cheryl, would you agree that the arrangement that we have is, when you look at that, favorable?
Yes, very much so.
If we consider this additional expense, can we consider anticipated revenue?
On the athletic trainer?
Yeah.
I don't look at that, the, I don't think so. The only thing that might be able to work is, would that be something, for example, that, I look to the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation, would that be something that they might be able to say, we'd like to help with the athletic services? And there might be just for this company, maybe a trade-off that they get some advertising or something to be able to go back and do that. That was something I think-
Well, I mean, like a potential contract with the, is it the Warhawks? A potential contract with a collegiate program that would do training, something like that, that would generate income, that would use the fields?
Would be looking at field rental from that to cover that? Typically, Cheryl, when we do get revenue for field rental, does that go into the general account or are we putting that also into?
That goes into the general miscellaneous revenue.
So right now, it's revenue that's coming back, it's helping the whole school department, but I think, Lisa, you may be saying, can that be focused in this particular area to help with that?
Possibly.
Something to think about.
I mean, I think, me personally, like, you know, all of these things are important, but if we have, but if we're working on getting that rate down a little bit, then I think a lot of these things should be considered to be cut, right? I would be in favor of keeping for now ice hockey and swim. I think that there's enough kids, sounds like there's enough kids participating that it's worthwhile. We also may be able to get some, and I'm not, again, I'm new to schools, but maybe there's sponsorship opportunities, maybe the Legacy Foundation could help us out with that as well. I think that those two programs in particular, there's a lot of interest. I think there'd be a lot of interest in the community to, to, to help them be successful, I think, so.
Paul, do you have any thoughts?
I guess I'm, I don't know. I'm a bit confused and disheartened again. We knew that this budget was going to be tough, and we knew that we were going to have to be thinking about, you know, considering some tough cuts. So at this point, I really think that if there were other areas where we could find a way to cut as opposed, what I'm trying to say is, I feel like Matt and Cheryl have done their job and they always do it very well, so presenting this is, this list is because out of all the things that we could pluck at, these are valid suggestions. My heart does go out to, you know, the kids and the families that have their children playing ice hockey and, and doing swim. My other thought though is not every school has every single type of sport available. I just, the athletic trainer would be wonderful to have also. All of these things would be great to have. I just, give me some other options then before I say, no, we need to keep this and we need to keep this and we need to keep that, and we need to also consider an assistant athletic director. Like, we got to start figuring out what makes more sense and what's gonna, you know, thinking long-term. So I'm okay with, as hard as it is, I'm okay with this list as it is. And that's all I'm going to say right now.
Melissa?
I think, you know, as we've mentioned, we may be able to find a way to help the swim and ice hockey, but for now, until maybe we do ask or find that coverage, just so it doesn't just like, we don't just chop it off and no, don't go looking, right? I'd like to, I'd like to leave it in today, just so we, you know, it's on our agenda tomorrow.
Lisa, I felt like you, you had already touched upon that. Is, do you feel the same way or?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Or how do you feel?
How do I feel? Okay, no, okay. I'm okay with cutting it. I think that we can help students that want to do ice hockey or swim. We can find ways to help them either through fundraising, maybe the Alumni Association can help them, maybe the Legacy Foundation can help them, maybe we can help them with fundraising. I think that we can take this list as, as is and help them in another way. That's-
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, and it's impossible, you don't want to pick and choose, you know, what, what you think is, because they're all valuable, right? And ultimately, what's happening is, this is a budget that's pretty, that's lean, it's extremely lean. And so we're kind of, we're kind of pulling little bits of chicken meat off these and saying, let's save this and let's save that, right? And we have to, I think it's, you know, we have to acknowledge that this is, this is a lean budget. And if there's, if there's big excesses that we could cut, I haven't seen it yet in, in my four weeks. And so, you know, when we're talking about these programs, yeah, I mean, it's, this is just, this is just really hard, you know? But I do think that like ice hockey and swim, are there other opportunities for us to fundraise for them and get some, get some support? Because they're, you know, it might be easier than, than other ones, so, you know, yeah. Initially, that's what I'm thinking too.
I guess oftentimes it's multiple kids in one family, you know, and that's the piece where, you know, that's, you know, it's, no, all, anybody who has kids in sports, it's normally both kids are doing basketball or all three kids are doing. So for that, it's not just, that's my only, I guess.
Sorry, I, I should have said that too. When I said my piece is that I do think that there are other ways that we can, that in this community, that we can figure out a way to help them. So, yeah. Anyway, sorry. Go ahead, Amy. Go ahead, Amy.
No, and, yeah, Lisa, you bring up a good point about some of those groups I hadn't thought of as well, to try to help with those handful of students. So it seems like the majority of us then are saying to move a lot, move ahead with what you have. And thank you for the discussion.
Okay, we'll continue to do that. And then, as I mentioned, our next meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday at 4 o'clock at Central Office. And that's where we can then continue to look at, through the articles and other considerations for us to be able to look at, is there anything else that we're looking at? I agree with all the things that have been said. This is an extremely lean budget. There's not a lot to be able to come back, pick at. One of the things that we went into this budget was not as much looking to expand as much as, let's maintain. And you see a couple of areas where we are maintaining or expanding a little bit. And a lot of those, as you look through our subsidy that we're getting through the main Department of Education, it's justified for us to be able to continue to expand because those populations are also increasing. So as we get that subsidy, as much as we'd like to put that towards tax relief, we also have to be able to consider that it also has to go to programming for us to be able to keep up and maintain all those, you know, those changes that are happening to our district, throughout our district.
Melissa, were you going to say something? I thought you were going for it earlier. John, you had sent an email to, just about some points, did everything get brought up that you had put in the email?
Yeah, so I, I sent an email just, and again, being new and wondering about the potential for sponsorships, public, private, you know, partnerships. So, you know, would there be an organization, a business that would like to sponsor some parts of the, of the schools, right? And just look for other ways that we could fund some of these initiatives, right? Because I think that, you know, the tax, having a tax base, right, is, isn't necessarily a sign of wealth, right? So having to pay through property tax. So is there ways that, you know, I'm just going to throw this out there, but like, would someone be interested in sponsoring our hockey players, right? And, and the benefit to them is real because they could publicize that they're, what a great job they're doing for the community? Or, or would they be interested in sponsoring other parts? It doesn't have to be sports, it could be, there's probably a, you know, fund and need kind of situation. So I, I think that's, you know, and I kind of put it out to you guys, just to, you know, I didn't want to surprise anyone, but I did want to kind of throw it out there that maybe it's time to start. And I know that it has been some of those public-private partnerships. And I know there's administrative work that's around that, like, who's going to, who's going to go out there and, you know, find these, these interested partners and things like that? But, and, so that's, yeah, so I think...
I, I think what you do, we, we, we do have some existing groups in place and they've been very beneficial to the school system. What come to mind right off the bat is the Sanford Schools Legacy Foundation. One of the things they've tried to do is, they want to support the schools in any way they can. A lot of it would be in those ways that the traditional budget can't do, how can they come back in to supplement that? And I think as we start to look at it, things getting tighter and tighter, that scope may have to expand a little bit in terms of what they have done. The Red and White Foundation has also been a very big supporter, especially since we've gotten away from the pandemic and they've been able to come back. We talked about earlier that the Sanford School Department hosts a lot of these big events that come back. And when you do, the Red and White Foundation have been a big helper to help us do that because they can run a concession stand that can be really busy. And those funds that they're able to come back, they are giving back to it. Typically, those focus more in the athletic arena of things to be able to do that. So those are a couple that come to mind. I've heard tonight Alumni Association, Chamber of Commerce, those have not been, you know, to date, things that I know a superintendent that I pursued to be able to do that, but I think there's opportunities for people to be able to do that. One of the things we love about Sanford community is, they're very supportive in terms of that. They very much want to invest in youth and care about our, our schools and our students to be able to do that. So those may be some opportunities that, sure, we would love to be able to cover this through our normal taxes that would come back, but no one is, everyone's looking at, as that continues to rise and rise, that burden is becoming harder and harder to be able to pass on.
I also wanted to mention the Sanford Band Booster, like, Band Boosters, they're been raising a lot for our, our band, as marching band as well.
Yep.
Is there anything that any of the members would like to have Matt and Cheryl look into for Wednesday?
Continue to look at that list a little bit more in, in depth that we, we came back. Yep, we can do that.
Well, what, can I ask, when you asked for this information, what was the reasoning? Just so that we can ponder it when we're looking at it.
Just for context and I, and, you know, I mean, as budgets move through, I mean, I was, to be honest, I was looking at a budget from, I think, 2023 a little bit, just to compare and, and, you know, kind of see where things have gone. And then also just to put into context, again, like, the, I mean, it's 1.2 million we added to our budget, positions that, you know, we carried over, just efficiency of them. I know, like, the art music teacher helps in other ways and there's things here that, obviously, we're getting another ESOL teacher, which is now MLL, you know? So now that I see the list, I just forgot what was on it, just to review it.
And I just want to add for those that aren't looking at the list, so the ones that were reduced from Esser was 1.3 million and what was basically essentially switched out, so kept, was 1.2, so it was less. I don't know if Cheryl just heard me and then if I said that correctly, but...
Sorry, I was talking with Cheryl.
That's okay.
I am not modeling good student behavior as the superintendent of schools.
Lunch detention tomorrow.
What is so interesting that you're whispering? Could you please share with the rest of the group?
No, we're, we're, obviously, this is, as we've always done, this is a process that comes back into it. So I think we're trying to look at, we've, we've done a nice job this evening. I think it set us up in terms of also our meeting on Thursday with the leadership team on a couple of things on that level. I also think we've got some movement here initially to consider. And then I do think as we start to get in on Wednesday, it's going to be a continued look at, is there other things that we might be able to come back at? So that's, Cheryl and I were kind of getting an idea of, you know, a general overview of numbers and what we were being able to get at.
So let me repeat what I said.
Yep.
So I just, just to make, make, because unless I'm, I want to make sure that I'm correct when I just said that. So when we're just saying comparisons, so like, to Melissa's point, when she said, you know, we had the 1.2, and correct me, Melissa, if I, if I misspeak, but that the Esser positions that we kept at the sheet that we're looking at is one point, a little over 1.2 million.
Correct.
Correct? But what we removed was over 1.3 million.
Correct.
Okay.
When you say moved, we restructured, we came back. There was things that were removed from that, but it was removed from the burden on the local taxpayer.
Right.
Yeah, because, you know, some of those were, we, we did our best to restructure. We really came at it from a thoughtful, strategic place on how can we balance that with also continuing to be able to meet the needs of our students and district in the best way.
But a lot of these were also Esser funds. So it's not that these were the Esser funds and then these weren't and we cut, these, you know, so these were like increased class sizes. A lot of the teachers was, you know, our class sizes were down so we can come back half-time, kids could stay distant.
Yeah.
So this 1.3 is in, it's not what we took out to keep these, like, let's, it was, a lot of it was Esser funds as well.
There were parts of that, absolutely, because, you know, we were trying to look at, what did we use our funds? Thank you, yeah, what, I don't, we understand that, but I'm not sure that others would. So, yeah, that, that clarification's really helpful because we were looking at the priorities that we used on those funds to get our kids back to school. And we knew there'd be increased class sizes and we also knew that they would be going back to the class sizes. And I, I think that that's where we're at. You can look at that, that we have got ourselves back to that. We are looking at those class sizes again because that is another area that we might be able to make some headway in. Just always making sure that just because we had that this year doesn't mean we're going to have it next year. We have to make sure that the enrollments are in those places to be able to support that and doing that.
There's still one thing I, I want to make sure that you keep in the back of your mind. We're at 11.4% without any new valuation. That's additional revenue. So that right there can bring that number down, because if you remember, last year, we were like at 7.5% taxation, but once they finished all their new valuation, it brought it down to 2.43. So I just want to remind you of that. So don't focus so much fully on a number because there is new valuation, we don't even know yet. I'm hoping when he meets with the leadership this week, that we'll get some idea of what that money could be, because that, should it be in the back of your head, that that could be coming towards us.
And to be clear, it's all estimates at this point. Even when we go through with it in the month of March, that's nothing official, that's more about really doing the best estimate at that time. So Cheryl's right, that number can come back, that number is going to have some other things going at it to help bring it down that are coming, not from the school side, but with the city side.
And some of that might not be really concrete until we get into the city side. So that's, I just wanted to keep that in the back of your head because that number does bring this 11.4% down.
So there's something for us to be hopeful and to look forward to. So while you say that, we'll also be hopeful that the insurance can maybe go and switch directions.
Yeah.
We're less hopeful about that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Does that be fair to say, Cheryl? Okay. Yep. Okay, so I think we've got a good plan.
I was just going to say, and then the other thing, and I know, I, I met, you know, I mentioned it, the, what is it, the 279, SD 279? Oh, look at me go.
ED.
ED, aw, dang. Just looking at the, the very few things that we have more than our formula, I know that Cheryl's looking at that, it's not going to make the impact, you know, as much as of an impact, but just look at what that looks like when you slide it around.
Right, and we're always going to be a little higher on some stuff because we have three elementary schools.
Yeah, and so that's something we can look into maybe and talk a little bit more on at Wednesday's workshop, is to be able to look at those numbers a little closer, those ratios, I should say, a little bit closer. Yep.
When you say because we have three elementary, usually it's because we're not even, it's not even...
Well, it's, they're assuming you have one elementary school in the formula, so you could break things out evenly over, so you'd have two principals of an elementary school that's much bigger, or you may have an extra assistant. But you might not have two at each school like we'd have to because of how we run our business.
Or like, you need a half of an ed tech.
Sure.
But you need one in each, you know what I mean? You need one and a, one and a half ed techs would cover it, but you need one in each school, so we have three, you know?
Well, and I think the school nurse is a good example for that.
Yeah, school nurse is a good example of that and librarian, kind of in a way too.
They don't do it on a school basis, they don't per stu, per, and then what happens is you can't put a half a person there and a half a person there. So it, sometimes will get a little bit out of wonky.
So that's why we may be over a little bit in certain areas because of those type of things.
Is there anything? Yep, John?
Yeah, just thank you. I mean, these numbers are, are clear, they're concise, they're, you know, I think they're easy to understand. So when we talk about, what we're talking about, you know, we can see exactly what we're talking about. And, you know, we know, you know, assistant athletic director, this is what it's going to cost. So we know, it's not just, we're not just throwing out things out there. This is what it costs, this is what it looks like, this is what it can do, and then we can make informed decisions. So thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Anything else? Last call. All right. All right, I make a recommendation to adjourn this meeting at 5:24.
So moved.
All right. All in favor? Are we doing that? All in favor? Discussion. Lisa, you want to stay? You want to leave? We're done. Okay, thank you so much, we adjourn.